All right, thank you. We will begin tonight's Board of Zoning Appeals meeting for Thursday, November 6th, 2025. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic over which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Bradley?
Yes.
Mr. Gresham?
Here.
Ms. McAdams?
Here.
Ms. Lucas?
Yes.
Chairman Alphaham?
Yes.
So now we're going to begin the finished case, case number 2167. Application of Walter Salazar for permission to maintain finished basement at 76-78 Hinkle Avenue, New York, 1150.
Good evening. I'll score you in both, one at a time. Can you state your name and address?
Walter Salazar, 76 Yens, 1150 Avenue, Pennsylvania.
Name and address, please.
My name is Dean Katsupis Maya. This is 121 Newbridge Road, Hicksville, New York, 11801.
You both please raise your right hand. Do you swear or promise to test windows with this evening? Will be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth under the penalties of perjury?
Yes, I do.
Okay.
Good evening, members of the board. This is our third time here coming for the board for this variance to legalize a finished basement. As we left off on the last hearing, there was some questions that needed to be answered and then also some other board members needed to come out for an inspection. So one of the main items, there was a question at the last hearing, was whether or not there was a rental permit for this house. And speaking to my client, he was able to, he did get a hold of the receipt, and I do have a receipt here, which would like to submit for the rental permit. Speaking to Mr. Foster in the Building Department, he said the rental permit is on hold because they're not issuing the rental permit subject to the approval or disapproval of this board hearing here. So that's where we are with the rental permit. I'd also like to submit that.
May I stop you for one second? Did they previously have an active rental permit, to your knowledge?
I don't know.
Don't know?
It's held up.
Okay, thank you.
The receipt's dated May 7th of this year. So $100 to pay to apply for two rental permits, being that it's a two-family house. We also have to submit, we have leases from both units, and they indicate the upstairs unit and the ground floor unit. In the ground floor, the first floor unit has, is the, is the, is the one that has access to the, to the basement portion of this house. So I'd like to submit those
Please do, thank you.
To the board.
Give me one second. Mark these and submit them, and then we continue.
The finished basement.
Hold on. Continue to take everything on the record. It's hard. We'll take it as time. Before we start again?
Okay.
Do you want to do this before we start?
Yes, yes, thank you.
This is what we do before the law. Okay.
Not sure if this is the first floor or second floor.
One says
This is the first floor.
That would be
This is the first floor.
It seems they both have the same red cross.
One says
One says basement.
So we have four forms. It's a short form, another one page, three-page application. We have to do, we have to do, we have to do our obligation. According to the
It seems they both have the same amount of rent. So the first floor guy is not paying more to have access to this basement.
This one.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Are both tenants are currently there? Both floors are occupied under the terms of these leases?
What is that?
You have both floors occupied currently?
Yeah.
Okay. Go ahead.
Okay, so the finished basement, as I stated, will be accessed by the first floor. I know the board members have gone there. It is proposed to add an egress window to the back of the dwelling, so provide for proper egress, and they, they understand that it could just be one, one big room without any bedrooms or any sleep rooms down in the, down in the basement. Other than that, there's also a boiler room, which has two hot water heaters and two furnaces, and also a gas meter area with two gas meters in the basement, and, and the bathroom as well.
Okay, when, when I went there, we entered through the side door and went directly down to the basement. Is there an interior staircase going from the first floor to the basement also?
Yeah.
Aside from the one on the side? Is there another one?
Yeah.
There's a second access down to the basement?
There's a door.
Yeah, got one, the door goes to the Yeah, to my understanding, the side door, there's also another door that leads to the first floor. So you can enter from the first floor, you can go right to the basement, and then you could also go outside too. But there's no, there's nowhere from, the second floor can't go to the basement unless it come in through the side door. But that wouldn't be the case here. It would only be accessed by the first floor people unless the second floor people needs the service to, need the boilers or anything like that. But that would be a landlord responsibility anyway.
So in the lease, I didn't see anything restricting the second floor from using the basement, but you're saying the first floor tenant is the one that you give access to the basement to?
Yeah, yes.
And they both pay the same amount of rent?
Yeah.
Just clarity, if you don't mind. You said there's two staircases that lead to the basement? Two staircases or one?
No, one.
Just one?
Well, there's the exterior door. Yes.
And you said there's also an interior inside the first floor apartment, like from the kitchen or something?
Well, it's a door that leads to the same staircase.
So the one staircase?
One staircase, yes.
Right, okay, that was my
So that door, is that on the entrance level, not the side door, the other door that leads to the staircase?
He's saying there's only the one
Well, there's one, I apologize. There's one exterior door that leads to the staircase. If you keep going straight, there's another interior door that also leads to that same staircase.
There's not a separate staircase, only that one staircase?
Right. But that, that separate door that leads to the one staircase? Correct. How is that door accessed? Can we be having the first floor apartment only? First floor apartment only? Yes. Okay.
So you are aware that the basement area cannot be used for residential purposes, correct? You acknowledge that, that it cannot be used for residential purposes? And if this was approved, each year you have to reapply again for rental permit. Is it one year or two years, guys?
Every two years.
Two? So every two years, you would have to pay for a new rental permit? If it was approved, and we have not voted on it or made a motion on it yet, at such time, it would need to be inspected to make sure that nothing was being done in the basement for residential purposes. You understand that?
Yes.
Okay.
When you say residential purposes, you mean
Sleeping?
Yeah, sleeping quarters.
Sleeping quarters, kitchen, cooking, nothing like that in the basement? Understood?
Understood.
Okay. Personally, I'm not concerned about somebody having a rec room in their basement. I am very concerned about illegal housing in basements and addicts within the village. I'm not saying that you, I'm saying this is something that happens all over the village. So we have to be very clear, it is not to be used for sleeping, it is not an additional apartment, it is not for cooking. Aside from the regulations, we, every week we hear about fires with people being displaced, and typically they're coming from basement apartments and attic apartments, as well as the legal dwelling apartments. We never want to approve something like that or consider something in that case. So I want to be very clear that that's what we would expect if we were to vote to approve this, okay?
Yes.
All right, thank you. Anything else from the board?
Can you explain to me why you need the window, the exit door?
Well, the, the egress window would be, you know, in many areas, it's, it's a code requirement, if you have finished living space, to be able to just add a separate means of egress. And that's really just an oversized window that somebody could escape from in need of emergency. And in this case, being that it would be a rec room, it would allow additional light vent to the basement as well.
We took public comment on this last night? Or we did not, because we adjourned it, right?
I believe we did not.
Okay. The board doesn't need anything else at this point? So thank you, if you gentlemen. First, I will ask now if there's any member of the public who would like to speak either for or against this application. You can come forward now. All right, there being none. With the noted conditions, I would like to ask for a motion on this, please.
Chair Alphaham?
Yes.
You might restate the conditions.
Absolutely. The, at the time that you would be applying for your rental permit, if it is found that you are using the basement area, or your tenants for that matter, because, you know, sometimes tenants do things that landlords are not aware of it. If it's found that it's being used for sleeping quarters, for cooking, for residential area as a separate apartment, you would lose the rental permit for the entire building. You understand that?
I understand.
So that is one of the conditions.
Also, and it will also consent to warrantless searches upon renewing your rental permit. So every time the rental permit is renewed, you're consenting to a search, to the building from coming in and doing warrantless search?
Yes, absolutely. And I would like to ask, not as a condition, but I believe you mentioned you do not have washer and dryer facilities within the building. It would be a benefit for your tenants if you would consider putting that in the basement. Would make it a more desirable rental and a better living quality there within the, the building. So just, that's just a suggestion, it's not a, a condition for you. And having said that, can we have a motion on this, please?
Mr. Chair, I move that we vote to approve this application.
With noted conditions?
With noted conditions.
Okay, is there a second?
I second.
Mr. Bradley?
Yes.
Mr. Gresham?
Yes.
Mr. McAdams?
No.
Ms. Lucas?
Yes.
Chairman Alphaham?
Yes.
Okay, congratulations, good luck, and I hope you have a, a great project there.
Thank you.
So now we're going to move forward with our new cases, starting with case number 25-0185. Application of Food Bazaar, a non-property owner LLC, for rent under section 139-655. Section 113, definition, wall sign, of the zoning code for building hipset. Permission to store rare wall signage and rare parking in Fox Street. Dash Food Bazaar, rare wall sign, at 132 Fulton Avenue, AKA 16th Street, Hicksville, New York, 1150. The property located in a residential D zone on section 34, block 300, block 70, on Atlantic Saxon map, looking for a mass mall, and a corporate building.
Can you have a name and address?
Yes, my name is Augustine Lee. Address, my office is 156-15 Northern Boulevard, Plushing, New York, 11354.
Please raise your right hand, ask where you went. Do you swear or promise to test windows with this evening? Will be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth under the penalties of perjury?
Yes, I do.
Okay, you may proceed.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Augustine Lee, and I'm presenting a signage application that was denied because of the barriers, I mean, because of the zoning ordinance, that you can only have 300 square feet of maximum signage. I would like to explain the site condition of the building. Food Bazaar is located at the corner of front on Cathedral Avenue, and approximately, it has 62,000 square feet of retail square footage, with the messing on second level. Currently, right now, Food Bazaar has two street signage that is located on the Fulton Avenue, that is approximately 74 square feet. Last year, when they moved the, submitted the application with the front facade signage, that is approximately 190 square feet. That was the initial application that was submitted last year. Following that, because they have a pharmacy tent, and by New Year's Day, they're required to have a separate signage, they submitted an application for many hub signage on the same premises, that is approximately 15 square feet, 15 square foot. Right now, Food Bazaar is requesting an installation of 125 square foot signage on the rear of the building on Front Street, that, that's the only area that we currently asking is on this public street, because the, because the front facade signage is located, I'm not sure if it's because of the public space, is it public street or a parking lot? So I'm not, I'm not very sure about that condition. And the zoning ordinance, I understood that the signage cannot exceed 300 square foot in total attached to the face of public street. So I'm coming here to the board actually requesting this variance, because the largest sign that is 190 square foot is located in the parking lot, and which I consider is not a public space, in my opinion. And if that's the case, we have a total that is just over 300 square foot, if that's the case, actually.
If it's not the case, and that is considered a public street, then how many square feet are there?
We, the total square footage, including on the Fulton Street, we have 404 square footage, 404. And with the current application, the current application is 125 square foot.
That's the Front Street side?
That's the, no, this application is for, that's correct, it's from Front Street, I'm sorry, yes.
Currently, there's no sign on Front Street?
There's no signage, and that's the only, because on Cathedral Avenue, even though we have 200 linear feet of property, there's no signage on that street.
Mm-hmm.
And Front Street will be the main access as a signage for Food Bazaar, for that intersection of Cathedral in front.
Do you know if the prior owner had any signs on Front Street?
They did, actually. Stop and Shop had a signage, and if you see on our drawings, actually, they have the linear, there is approximately 20 feet, but the Stop and Shop logo, you can see, is approximately 24 or 36 inches, but the length is 30, 20 something feet. Food Bazaar has a logo that has a T shape, which has a Foot Bazaar and a supermarket on the bottom, so. And approximately, the front one is which the signed applicant made a mistake by actually, by installing the largest one, thinking that there not going to be additional signage, and he installed the 190 square footage, and that's the reason that we are at this problem, at this condition.
So on the, the paperwork we got, it's 142 square feet. You said 125?
I, I measured 125, actually. This is the measurement from my other cat, Bob.
Oh, it's on, on this diagram that we got from you?
Oh.
It says 142.
142, yes. That's the signage company that, what the measurement that they did is 16, 9 and 1/4 by 8 feet 5 and 1/2.
Right.
But in my opinion, like actually, the, the signage is not a rectangle, rather that is a
I see what you're saying, so it could be a little bit less than that. And so you're saying this, the sign in front is the largest sign that they do, they mistakenly, or they weren't planning on another sign, so they put the largest sign in front?
No, the largest sign is in the parking lot, which is 190 square foot.
Mm-hmm.
And the second one that they're requesting, the variance, is for 125 square feet.
In the back, so. What other sizes of, of signs do they get?
What other size?
So if they have 190, 140, they must have some range of signs in there?
So the one on the front is, is 21 feet and 1/2.
I'm saying in other locations?
Yes.
Do you have smaller versions of this sign?
We have only on, in front of the parking lot, the one that we are requesting, and there is on Fulton Street of the
In, in any other location, in any of the other stores?
Oh.
Do they have smaller versions of that design?
We have a store in Westbury, right?
They do have another one, but they, they're larger, actually, the signage, yes.
These signs are customized, right? They can, you can make it to the size in which you're requesting, right?
Correct, yes.
Okay, so let us look at the, the differential between what the code says that you can have
Yes.
And what you're requesting. We may have to suggest a modification in size.
Correct, I understand.
So if we're looking
Let's play with the calculator for a minute, okay?
Another one? Put that one there. We've considered what we did for, what is it?
The storage?
No, 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 not the storage place.
Ross.
Ross and Arbor Frey, similar situations in the world.
Stay consistent.
Yeah. So I, I think.
The total would be about 350 square feet of everything combined?
Everything combined will be over 104 square feet.
Of all the signs?
Yes, including the new one, actually, yes.
So what is the total?
The total will be 404.
404?
Yes.
That's 100.
Yeah.
Yes.
It's about, I think that's
Mm-hmm. You should see reduction, reduction.
The percentage is over.
Yeah. I mean, that's, it's, seems to me a little bit oversized for the project. Obviously, you, you wouldn't need to come here if it was not oversized. If it was 40 or 50 feet total oversized, maybe it's not the same as, as more than 100 feet oversized.
100, yes.
So is there a possibility your client or you would reduce this by a certain percentage?
I have to ask my clients, of course, yes. I will pursue to ask them.
Anybody have feelings on that? Do you think that's important to them? So I would suggest, you know, if you're a little over the, the total, I don't think we would have a, a problem with that. We have to be mindful of a creep of signs all over the village, it's not just your project. I don't think it's inappropriate to have a relatively large sign on the back of the building there, you're not facing residential properties. But at the same time, you may be able to accomplish the same effect that your client wants to get by slightly You can be in touch with Ashley for scheduling, and, you know, we're just looking for reasonable accommodation, see what you come back with. So, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Next, we have case number 25-0401. Application of Fereng Homes LLC, for variance under section 139-655, section 139-8, extension or operation use. Section 139-13, damage, destruction, demolition, of use. Of the zoning code for building hipset, for permission to rebuild existing non-conforming dwellings. Over 50% of reconstruction, at 58th Renton Ave, Hipset New York, 1150. The property is located in a residential D zone on section 34, block 231, block 148, on Atlantic Saxon map, of the town of Masswell, and a corporate building.
Ashley, can I make one quick announcement? If there is anyone waiting for the environmental impact cases that we will be hearing after this, there is no testimony or decision made on that tonight. It's for scheduling purposes only, because I realize you might be waiting for that.
I'm prepared to call in December, but I was just saying those
Okay, great. That's fine, I didn't want you to wait if you were expecting to go through. Sorry to interrupt you, please go ahead.
Ms. Jeffries? Hugh Schaefer, 7 Forest Avenue, Massapeak, New York. I'm appearing as the applicant for Fereng Homes LLC.
You swear or promise to testify in the trial, will be the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
Yes, I do. Under the penalties of perjury? Yes, I do. Okay, good evening, Mr. Chairman.
Good evening, the board. This is a non-conforming dwelling that was built in the 1920s, and earlier this
404?
Yes.
That's 100.
Yeah.
Yes.
Keep it to balance, yes.
You should see reduction.
You've reduced the weight, you want into the percentage of over.
Yeah. I mean, that's, it's, seems to me a little bit oversized for the project. Obviously, you, you wouldn't need to come here if it was not oversized. If it was 40 or 50 feet total oversized, maybe it's not the same as, as more than 100 feet oversized. So, is there a possibility your client or you would reduce this by a certain percentage?
I have to ask my clients, of course, yes. I will proceed to ask them.
Anybody have feelings? Do you think that's important to them? I thought so. I would suggest, you know, if you're a little over the, the total, I don't think we would have a, a problem with that. We have to be mindful of a creep of signs all over the village, it's not just your project. I don't think it's inappropriate to have a relatively large sign on the back of the building there, you're not facing residential properties. But, at the same time, you may be able to accomplish the same effect that your client wants to get by a slight. You can be in touch with Ashley for scheduling, and, you know, we're just looking for reasonable accommodation, see what you come back with. So, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
So next, we have case number 25 dash 0409. Application of Farrah Homes LLC for variance under section 199 dash 6 to 555, section 139 dash 8, extension or alteration of use. Check section 139 dash 13, damage, destruction, elimination of use of the zoning code of Village Hempstead, permission to rebuild existing non-conforming dwellings, over 50% of reconstruction, and 58% rent sub. Hempstead, New York, 11550. The property is located in the vicinity zone, known as section 34, block 231, block 148, on Atlantic and Saxon, of the County of Nassau, and the property is Village Hempstead.
Good. Ashley, can I make one quick announcement? If there is anyone waiting for the environmental impact cases that we will be hearing after this, there is no testimony or decision made on that tonight, it's for scheduling purposes only, because I realize you might be waiting for that.
I'm prepared to call in December, but I was just saying those.
Okay, great. That's fine, I didn't want you to wait if you were expecting to go through. Sorry to interrupt you, please go ahead.
Name of the judge, please?
Hugh Schaefer, Seven Forest Avenue, Massapeek, New York. I'm appearing as the applicant for Farrah Homes LLC.
Mr. Blackway? Do you swear or purpose to testify with the scene, it will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes, I do.
Under the penalty of perjury?
Yes, I do. Okay, good evening, Mr. Chairman.
Good evening.
And to the board. This is a non-conforming dwelling that was built in the 1920s, and earlier this year, a permit was issued for the rear section of the house by the seller. The seller sold the property to Farrah Homes with a open permit, and they started the construction, the seller, and never finished it. So, Farrah Homes started to do the construction with the permit that was in effect. However, doing the permit work and framing, the frame noticed severe termite damage and water damage. The roof rafters that were put on the new part of the construction that was permitted were 2 by 8s. When they got to tie into the original house, they were 2 by 4s. Not only 2 by 4s, they were 24 inches on center rather than 16 inches on center. The roof shows some deflection between 1 and 2 inches, they were spanning the 2 by 4s about 12 feet, which is not acceptable. Maybe in 1920s, the lumber was a lot stronger, because the nominal size were larger. In this particular case, the roof framing due because of the termite damage and water damage was removed, which then brought the construction more than 50%. The proposed addition, which was permitted, was 500 square feet, where the total size of the house today is only 1,050 square feet, so it's slightly over. However, there's no change in the side yard, side yard activity, front yard setback, lot area occupied is only 17.1%, which is allowed 30%, and no change in, or it doesn't violate the floor area ratio. So, it does have a permit, and the hardship was the building department noticed this, and we stopped the construction and waited for the board's approval this evening. And that would be my case.
All right, thank you. So, I did notice that this is one of the few applications that's actually under the, way under the floor area ratio.
Oh, yeah.
And you have enough room within the lot to actually extend it a little, so.
It's a small house.
It's very small, that's one of the.
It's only 40 by 100, the house is only 1,058 square feet or something, very small.
And your client feels that that's a, a good size for, for this project?
Yeah.
Okay. I just wanted to note that it is not, as you say, is, is not oversized for the lot, it's a one-story, single-family home, and according to the Nassau County records, prior to the damage to the house, it was only 508 square feet, according to that.
That's all, that's all, a bungalow or whatever it was.
So, it sounds to me like it's an improvement in the property.
Yeah, I have some photos at the board, like to see it with the damage, but it's all blackened wood from the rot and the material damage.
Yeah, I understand that, so, if anyone would like to see the photos, anybody need to see them? Want to? Okay, yes, please bring them up.
Are these supposed to spoil the record?
Yeah, these are three photographs of the blackened areas that were, it was rotting.
These are pros and cons, right?
Exactly.
So, just mark these down, and I'll give you two minutes before you start it. Move along your hands, please.
Could take a break, maybe.
She's going to bring some waters out.
Thank you, Ashley. Mr. Schaefer, from the drawings, say one bedroom, one bath house?
Yeah, there's only one bathroom on that first floor. There was a proposed bathroom that was on the previous application in the basement. That was already approved by the approved permit that was done earlier this year.
So, I just see the entrance, the living room, small bathroom, kitchen, dining room, bedroom, and I can't quite make, on the right side of the house where it sticks out a little bit, is that a bedroom?
The right side from the front?
It's in the middle of the house on the right side.
Let me look at that.
Sure. It looked like it'd be all right. I think it's a second bedroom.
That's the second bedroom.
Okay, so, two bedrooms, one bath?
Yeah.
Small kitchen, dining room, okay. Well, obviously, to me, it's a better use of the space than what was there before, it will make it a livable, small.
New windows, new, new heating system, whatever. Never had insulation, so, it'll be insulated.
And your client purchased this in July of this year from?
June, June this year.
From the previous, a person who was unable to complete the construction at that time?
Correct.
Okay. All right, that's all the questions for me, anyone else? Questions concerned, member of the board? Thank you, Mr. Schaefer. At this time, if there's any member of the public who would like to speak for or against this application, please come forward. There being none, may I have a motion, please? Anyone like to jump in with a motion?
Mr. Chair, with case number 25 0409, I make the motion that we approve this application.
I second.
Mr. Blackaway?
Yes.
Mr. Gresham?
Yes.
Mr. Backmanic?
Yes.
Ms. Lucas?
Yes.
Chairman Alphahama?
Yes. Good luck for the project.
Thank you, have a good evening.
Thank you.
If I may, to tell you.
Can I extend my hat Kevin Rowan will come in December? I'm one of the owners of this unit, can I, because he did that?
Who's the owner?
One of them.
Yeah.
Okay, so last, we have our environmental impact, starting with case number 25 dash 0578. Application of Estatiels, number 2, for permission to operate FMRI facility within existing building at 86 dash 110 Main Street, AKA 106 Main Street, Hempstead, New York, 11550.
Yeah, this is a listed, actually requiring a short document before.
Chairman, case number 25 0578, I make the motion that we place on calendar for December 4th, 2025.
Second.
Mr. Blackaway?
Yes.
Mr. Gresham?
Yes.
Mr. Backmanic?
Yes.
Ms. Lucas?
Yes.
Chairman Alphahama?
Yes.
Next, we have case number 25 dash 0559. Application of Kevin Ram for permission to convert rear deck into habitable space and build garage and rear yard at 29 L pad, Hempstead, New York, 11550.
This is type 2 action, not requiring a mark number 4.
Case number 25 dash 0559, I make the motion that we place on calendar for December 4th, 2025.
Second.
Mr. Blackaway?
Yes.
Mr. Gresham?
Yes.
Mr. Backmanic?
Yes.
Ms. Lucas?
Yes.
Chairman Alphahama?
Yes.
So last, we have case number 25 dash 0847. Application of Unit U2 for permission for interior renovation, vertical extension of second floor and new roof at 167 Peter Ave, Hempstead, New York, 11550.
Yeah, this is a type 2 action, not requiring a mark number 4.
Case number 25 dash 0847, I make the motion that we place on calendar for December 4th, 2025.
Second.
Mr. Blackaway?
Yes.
Mr. Gresham?
Yes.
Mr. Backmanic?
Yes.
Ms. Lucas? Chairman Alphahama?
Yes. Second.
Mr. Blackaway?
Yes.
Mr. Gresham?
No. Yes.
Mr. Backmanic?
Yes.
Chairman Alphahama?
Yes. Please go, please go back to you.